Alrighty, um, I am, I think I am officially live. Just waiting for more people to come in. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome, welcome to the livestream. Um, hey, what's up, Alision? Thank you for watching my Avita video. I've seen your comment. I appreciate it. Hey Hunter, I think I'm gonna wait till like maybe four or five people join in. At least, or maybe six, I'm not too sure. And I'm just going to get started via with this workflow for today, so. Um, today I am going to be working on patch version 1.21. I'm just gonna try to do what I usually do, just like via live. Alright, yeah, we got six people in here, so. Seven, alright, y'all guys are crazy. Hey, 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 welcome, welcome. Alright, so I'm ready to basically speak. So 10 people, so. What I'm going to do as of right now, I'm on a very old client of PlayStation Home, as you could tell. I'm not on 1.86, I am utilizing the 0.89 build. What I'm going to do is attempt to port maybe some development scenes that came from 0.89? And I'm going to, um, trying to port that to 0.86. Hey Jinx, hey Elemental EU, thank you guys for joining. Um, but it's just crazy messing with this build and comparing it to like 1.86? Like, it was so basic, like this is like 2008 version of Home? Like, you can even tell by like the different textures of it, or like the textures of clothing, that it's a pretty bummy. I probably could port clothing to 0.86, but I'm not trying to do that right now. But yeah, these were like the basic ass clothing for, uh, 0.89. But what I'm going to try to do is see if I can enable development debug scenes. So with the 0.89 build sadly, I cannot use a ProDG Target Manager? And just type stuff in, I have to use a keyboard? But what I'm gonna do now is, uh, whatchamacallit? Let me see, if I go to... I need to try to find something. If I just type in map test? Hopefully, yeah, that should take me to a test tutorial scene, which is the mini game? I'm not too sure if the mini game works or not, so. Yeah, this is like the really old version of a mini game test. Alright, so we can add this space into 86? I'm just really trying to see what other scenes is in here. Oh, I forgot that, uh... Map, ball, let me see that. Why didn't even spell that right? Cause I know, I haven't messed with this client for so long, that, uh, whatchamacallit? Oh, it's Naryfire, what's up, what's up? Just wanna make sure. Oh, thank you guys. 18 people are watching, holy hell. That's kinda weird. Alright, so... This is just like a ball animation development scene? Alright, so that space works? I'm going to probably add this into the latest, what is this one? Map, video? Okay. And... It's weird how, uh, whatchamacallit? Add stuff in, hopefully I didn't freeze, or the video scene didn't just pop up? I think I aired out, maybe? Maybe not. I'm not too sure. I think I aired out, so maybe the video scene, it didn't like? Environments tested, video? Well, that's okay, I'll just relaunch, uh... I'm just gonna relaunch 0.89 then? Because, uh, whatchamacallit? Is there any way to list the maps? I think I've played around of that version, but didn't know any of the map names. Um, the client I'm using is like the actual like HDK build? So like 89 itself didn't really have any like maps? Cause like it's so basic and none of like, um, the spaces? Like all of the new stuff we have on 86 will definitely not run on this? Um... But right now, you probably won't see it, but my console is rebooting into 0.89. Let me see. Odd. My controller is not trying to connect right now, and I'm like, why? Hold on, let me see something. I'm gonna try to connect my PlayStation 4 controller here in a second? Because I am not too sure why I'm getting... This little issue right now? Let me see this, hopefully, this may work? Cause I'm not too sure, my PlayStation 3 controller is acting wonky? Alright, so yeah, connecting my PS4 controller was straight. Alright, I'll just use my PS4 controller right now? Yeah, I'm not too sure why? It's kinda funny that like the PS4 controller can still work with an old ass client like this? I guess that's just due to something else, but, uh... What we're gonna do now is just, um, let me look back at my local scene list? The video thing didn't want to load? Mini game, ball? I don't think I did a test scene though? Oh, I forgot, like I keep on thinking, huh? Map, test? I'm gonna try to port these scenes to, uh, 186? Alright, wait, that was the testing, I did it? I think the mini game one was like the actual arcade map mini game? I don't even know if, wait, so mini game and test is basically the same thing, I guess? Okay, so yeah, reading the logs now, I'm being pretty stupid. Uh... Video tutorial scene completed, video screen tutorial completed scene? Let me check my PC really quickly, and I'm going to see... I wanna see if the folder is actually there, maybe that's why it's like airing out per se? But, um... It's been so long messing with this, so I'm kinda like out of the loop? Alright, where was the location it was trying to like bitch about to? Uh, video screen tutorial? Yeah, the dot scene is here. There's actually two scenes? Okay, yeah, these dot scene lists are so basic, it's not even funny? And it has a screen link? I could've sworn DeadSec actually, uh... I think maybe that's why it doesn't like it, because it's like a backslash, but then, I don't know? I have to... Oh, I keep forgetting you can type in this client? I wanna see if it's just a memory error? Blah blah blah, Atom is not working, MP4 header? It could just be that, uh... Yeah, I'm not even too sure what's the issue with this? Alright, so just requesting something from like a IP address? I'm going to, uh, let me see something? Looking at the XML, I'm just gonna make sure it's running off RSS? And, uh, the test video, I think that's maybe what is causing the issue to freeze, maybe? Yeah, cuz this shit is like at 640? I don't even think 640p would have been allowed for this client? But just to retest again, I'm going to, uh, go back, but let me read the chat? When the game gonna be online in RPSC, or RPCS3? In terms of RPCS3, what we would have to do is try to patch out, um, PSN entirely? And the way how Home operates? Um, PSN is heavily integrated into, um, Home itself? But like, we are looking into ways on how to probably patch out PSN? But it'll be kind of a difficult feat, cuz it's like... Think about it this way, the best way I can explain it? Is imagine if you have like a human body without like its internal organs? Like if I just gave it a heart, and it doesn't have any veins or whatever? You still need some integrated parts, and that's basically what Home is to PSN? Like they're, they're very integrated? Um... But now, let me just load up the client itself? I'm gonna see if that changed anything? If not, I will move on from this? And where I'll get started trying to port these particular spaces? Into, um... The actual client itself, so, um... Or to 86? Let me see, map? Actually, before we do this as well, I am interested into, um, whatchamacallit? Let me see. Video screen, um, cinema auditorium? I actually wanna port the original like stadium or cinema auditorium, if I can spell it? Okay, I can't even spell today? Let me read this, alright, so cinema? A U D I T O? Oh, is it bitching about like probes? Ah, okay, so it's like... I don't know what the hell it was bitching about, but... This was like the really old ass auditorium? Okay, so... There's no, I remember they had like a probe collision issue? But I could probably fix that on 86 for sure? Because I can, um, I can manually check this? So where is it reading from? CinemaAuditorium.nova, so? Alright, what I'm gonna do is go to my PC? Alright, let me read the scene list? Alright, yeah, they both reading from the Nova script? I think this one is actually a bar file? Yeah, this is a bar? Okay, so everything is just packed in, and it's just assuming that the dot scene file is there? Alright, so... WaterTutorial.S scene? The fuck? Um... There's also a waterTutorial.S scene that's not even mapped in the client? What? There's also references to a Japanese home square? Okay. My brain is hurting now? Alright, what I'm gonna do is do something stupid? Or no, it is mapped in a client, what the hell? So wait? Let me just type in map, water? And I guess there's a water scene? Alright, so this is the water scene? Alright, so... There's a lot of stuff, and thank you for the donation? Mind you, this isn't going to the project, this is strictly going to me, but thank you? Um, but, so let me just write this down? I'm going to... I'm going to, um... I'm having kind of like a brain fart? What I'm gonna do is write the spaces I do wanna port over, so? So let me write this? Let me just look at the local scene list, and I could kinda reference myself from this? Not even too sure why, um... Okay, this is like acting like this? Alright, so cinema auditorium, I'm just calling it 0.89? Uh, the game, I'm just gonna call it? Test game development? 0.89? I'm also going to... I'm gonna actually manually try to port the vi- video one, cuz I'm... Test video? Video development? And ball scene? And... Okay, I know one of them are like basically connected to the damn same thing, so? Alright, maybe that's not four? Alright, and then, so water? Development testing, I guess, water? Now it is five, okay? I'm gonna just call it ball physics, uh, development scene? So that's my goal to port it to you guys for 1.86? So that's my general thing that I have to do for today? Um... Let me, let's go ahead and focus this in order? I'm going to go ahead and attempt to go and attempt this on 0.89? For each build, or basically what I'm gonna do is try to get core images for each space? So we could add this to the client, or to 86? So, next step I'm going to do is, um, I'mma create some dummy, or excuse me, dummy folders? Via for my 2.0 client, aka the one I've been working on? I'm going to use these file names I just created? And I'm going to, uh, just basically have them as templates? Where I'm gonna have my like thumbnail that? Cause I'm gonna make custom ones in your guys' face? So I'mma call this Cinema Auditorium 89, since I'm just gonna label this as 89? Uh, and I'm just gonna do this for each, uh, basically space I wanna do? So there's five I wanna attempt today? So test game development? It's gonna be that one? Um... Still got a lot of Vita stuff on my, uh, PC? Let me just take this out, since I'm done wo- working on the Vita for today? Uh, okay? Alright, test video development? I'm not too sure if that's gonna work, but I'm gonna attempt it today? It should work just fine on the 89 client, because, um... I mean, not 89, but 86, since I know you could run at least 720p video? So test video that? Um... Alright, so we got the ball physics space, I called it? And then I gotta make STCs for that? But that's like, that's just for the finishes, or finishing touches of what I plan on doing today? Because my goal is to at least get basically new five spa- or five new spaces? Even though if they're old as hell? I think it's still pretty cool to incorporate older scenes into the newer client? Just for histor- or you know, historic purposes? But, um, okay, so we got our five scenes? Now what I'm gonna do is, hey, turn up 159, thanks for joining? So I already labeled my spaces? Alright, I'm gonna, now my PS3 controller is working just fine? So what I'm gonna do now is get some template pictures? And I'm just gonna use these as like my icon? So let me see if I can knock this dude off the platform? So I'm gonna just teleport him, hopefully the teleport commands work, to like somewhere off the sky? Damn it, alright, so, oh shit, alright, he did fall? Okay, I don't even know, wait? Alright, well, he fell off the sky? But I should've had debug cam on? So what I'm gonna do is use teleport 111? And hopefully that should connect me back to the space itself? Now let me do debug cam? And then teleport him to like... Yeah, so... Oh wait, hold on, that command didn't work? Alright, so instead of me getting knocked off to like a really weird place? I should be able to, uh, whatchamacallit? Alright, I don't know what would be a good thumbnail for this space? Alright, this may be the thumbnail, it looks basic as hell? But it really isn't supposed to look pretty, since it's just for like development purposes? Alright, so, trying to like get it at a good angle? And let me move my bottled waters off the television stand, since I can, uh, see it better? Alright, so what I'm gonna do is take a screenshot? And then I'm gonna open up Photoshop, so let me open up Photoshop now? I'm going to take a screenshot? And hopefully, uh, it will be... Alright, so yeah, it took a pretty nice picture, I guess? Yeah, it's just like a void, because it's like the atmos or the atmos hasn't been created? So I'm gonna create a, uh, whatchamacallit? A test folder? I'm just gonna call it test images? And this is where I'm gonna have all of my, um... Spaces that I wanna create thumbnails for, for 86? And I'm going to, uh... Use that for the actual client itself, so? Let me find my test images folder, alright, and I saved it? Now we're gonna go to... The cinema auditorium, I'm gonna do the same thing? Yeah, whatever, it's bitching about probes? Thank you guys for watching, 19 people who are already like tuning in, and I'm randomly live shaming, y'all guys are crazy? But, uh... Now we're in the cinema itself? Alright, so... Let me go ahead and hit debug cam? Or god, I'm so not used to 89? Alright, so debug cam, I'm gonna hit teleport? I'mma send him somewhere out of space? But, uh, we're gonna make a cool thumbnail image to this one? Oh no, that little thing, like the little chat bubble was there? And I really didn't want that? I don't even know screen links would work with this damn space? Um... Let me see if I could just reload, and I gotta make sure I don't type anything? Cuz I see the meat offline, and that's gonna be kind of a pain to remove? So let me just verify that I have... Alright, so that's better? We could kinda get a cleaner image this way? I'm just trying to, uh, maybe? That doesn't look too bad if I take a screenshot? I miss home, but hope to see something to be able to play again soon on here? Won't give up, but guess what, we'll see? You could play the offline client now, if you want somewhat of a taste of PlayStation Home? And then, uh, yeah? But what I'm gonna do is take another screenshot using, uh, ProDG Target Manager tools? And I'm gonna use that for the offline client? But in Photoshop 2 as well? I'm gonna go to create a document? I'm gonna use my template or for the exact dimensions on how to create a thumbnail for 1.86? And then we're gonna create some, uh, metadata for these scenes? I may just use anything randomly? Alright, so... Damage is pretty good, I mean, I can make it a little bit brighter, but that's fine? Alright, so cinema auditorium is straight? And then, uh, mini game tutorial? So, let me see? We're gonna go and get the ball scene next? And we're just gonna do the same premise? So... Okay? I don't know, how should I do this? I mean, it's really like just a blue screen of like hell? But, um... I'm gonna try to time it in? Alright? Alright, so that is another image we could use as a test scene? Um, let me just look back at my list? Ball physics, water, we did, uh, test video? We can't get that to run on, for whatever reason? Oh, I actually think I didn't even test that? Oh, we got freaking little DeadSec right here? For the boot screen? Okay, so... Yeah, I'm gonna boot that? But you know what, just to leave it as a easter egg, I'mma have like this little icon here? Um... That's kinda funny that he left it there? Alright, so debug cam? I'm going to, uh... Alright, so... Alright, that looks okay, I guess? I'm just trying to prep for icons? And then, uh, what I'm gonna do was, uh, leave that here? Now what I'm going to do, let me just read the chat if anybody's saying anything? What's up Damian, what's up Zoo? What's up, what's up, what's up? How's the stream looking? Audio's fine, everything's straight? Now I guess I'm gonna type, uh, the matte video one? I may freeze, but if I freeze, it's okay? I'm not too worried about it? Cuz I'm gonna go, wait, see, the video one now works? Okay, so it was probably the damn video issue like I ta- talked about, it was probably encoding? I didn't freeze, so that's good? What I'm going to do now is do the same thing? Okay, so it does work? Alright, so this is just gonna be like a little... I don't know why, but seeing you toss your avatar into the blue void? Yeah, I, I just gotta throw him like a sack of potatoes? And thank you, alright, so? We're basically done with 89, I kinda got everything what I wanted to do? Alright, so I think we're done with 89 for the most part? Hold on, I am moving my, the actual video, there's something that's like popping up? Okay, now what I'm going to do is get working on the thumbnails? As well as getting working on these actual environments for the scenes? And this is kinda the tricky part, trying to port? But let me focus on the thumbnails itself? And then I gotta work on the STCs? So this is the water one? And all I'm gonna do is try to... Alright, so this is gonna be our water scene? Luckily, these images, uh, don't have to be pretty? But, uh... Let me go to... There's so many folders I gotta check, like... there's so many folders I gotta check like a thousand times over ah hold on I think I made a boo boo because I remember I made another client the other day and I gotta make sure my uh thumbnails are actually going into the correct location so cuz I remember I made a shortcut and I don't wanna like do extra work if I don't have to okay so let me just delete this shortcut I'm gonna put this shortcut so let me create one on my desktop where the hell is it went alright so yeah cuz thank God I caught that now cuz I probably would if I would have booted into uh what you might call it if I were to boot into uh one point eighty six I would have been like what the hell so let me just label this thumbnails new just this is something internally for me that I know uh but let's go back to here let's go and save this as a PNG and we're going to go to the new set of thumbnails I don't even know what I called the space itself yeah let me do a list instead because or not a list details yeah let me set this as date cuz at least it will kinda ta- toggle alright so here we're just gonna save this thumbnail as large dot PNG that's just like the typical name I saved it I saved my stuff as um why is the layer channel gone okay and then we're just gonna kinda rinse and repeat this really quick so cinema auditorium I may make it a little bit lighter I don't know if I wanna make it a little bit lighter cuz it's kinda dark so let me duplicate the layer and I'm going to maybe lighten it yeah that actually looks better when it's a little lighter since you can see it alright and this one I'm gonna save this as I wanna make sure I have it alright so that is done for the thumbnail I'm just gonna put these under public spaces as well how do I deal with booters um I usually don't have that type of issue but I would advise you to possibly get a uh a VPN and not join crazy parties if you're on like PlayStation four cuz I know people could sniff your IP address like that but um okay that looks pretty good for the cinema auditorium for its like little thumbnail alright same thing with this one I don't even know what made me today try to go on point eighty nine but it's kinda cool to like you know recollect and go back into time holy snap oh yeah I know why it's having an issue cuz I'm glitching um let me just type in home I got like two keyboards in my hand alright but this scene is the ball scene alright so large fuck a type today alright and now gonna do the video scene yeah but always thought the PSP was pretty cool for home like that little I'm a big fan of the PSP so it's always cool to see that test game development the hell I'm getting confused oh no that's the video one I can't be getting confused this early in the stream alright and I think last but not least we need to do the arcade with the dead sec little icon there alright let me just stretch it out just a little bit like that then I'm going to go to save uh PNG and test game development should be that so we accomplished today at least the that we did test all the scenes to run and we just got our test images into our thumbnails column via right here uh let me delete this dummy folder yeah so you can see here um this is the same stuff I've been messing with now so that is done now what I'm going to do is transition over to um I got so much stuff now water tutorial alright we're gonna go to cinema auditorium I'm gonna take the bar file and I'm going to extract it decrypt it and try to rebuild it from scratch I'm pretty interested on what this may look like only due to the fact that um I don't know how screen looks or excuse me screen links are set up you think there's gonna be modding on PlayStation five uh probably I mean I think every console may get a modding scene depending on how like seeing people are like I already know there people who love like the modding scene or like people who actually learned exploits and stuff are gonna buy like two PlayStation fives at day one and try to find any zero days yeah I do want GTA six as well too alright but um alright so I got the mapper up right now oh wait 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 I did a I did a bar to extract alright so I gotta find it on my desktop and then where I'm gonna put it at yeah you could just I'm gonna put it on my desktop so right now I'm decrypting the bar file this shouldn't have any issues cuz this damn file is so old um that even with like offset you could do this with alright so here are like the textures and stuff for the original ci- cinema auditorium so I'm just gonna let it do its thing until everything is unbarred and then uh I'll come back to this I mean yeah I was playing GTA five the other day I do I do wanna PlayStation five granted respo seven looks pretty nice I really do want that and hopefully I want uh what you might call it what's that other game or no what I'm not out of the game I do want backwards compatibility to PlayStation four stuff alright I think or not it's still items extracting out or textures I play GTA five um I I play like a lot of tr- uh not tryhard TDMs I call it but just regular death matches and stuff I like doing that and I like driving around I really love cars and driving around on GTA is something I like to do when I'm not trying to get in the fight yeah I like the heist too I used to play a lot of heist with my friends like um I remember me and my other friend uh we on GTA I forgot what heist it was but you could basically do it just with two people and we did it on like uh like the hardest mode and we actually did it but it stressed me the hell out like GTA I love it but it stresses me out going online because people be acting brazy alright so yeah there's actually a lot of textures into this which I wasn't expecting but that's good yeah I used to mod back on a PlayStation three and I'm uh sometimes on my uh offline PS4 the five point oh five system I got I mod off GTA five I do like racing on GTA when people are not playing like too dirty and clean I'm just trying to wait for uh I'm just trying to wait until yeah there's so many textures that still gotta get decompiled so in the meantime I'm just gonna be talking to you guys and then um I'm going to actually uh work on something else you know what in the meantime actually um I could create nah actually I don't wanna create a dot SEC yet because I need to uh what you might call it I need to do that at the same time as I do this so I'm gonna take the cinema auditorium dot scene and just copy it now on a Joe broken PlayStation four that only works with like five point oh five and lower uh consoles via in the system like if a game is higher than a five point oh five firmware then quote unquote you can't dump the game so anything that's basically higher than God of War you can't play so anything that's lower than God of War in terms of firmware then yeah what's up Maz yeah today I this is just a live stream me working on a PlayStation home update I am compiling a new build for one point eighty six or a patch I should say yeah alright so all of my textures has extracted out alright so yeah that that's a lot of stuff but what are we gonna do is I'm gonna set up the dot scene I wanna see what firmware version this was or file yeah it doesn't even say that's how old this damn scene is literally just yeah it's just one big MDL file okay so in this case I'm going to just run over to the dot scene itself and I am going to check out why does it have two scenes that's weird this thing has two damn scenes odd okay oh okay so I guess this scene is like the XML which is hot as hell hold on I don't even think it has a screen link like I guess that is its screen link so I would manually have to try to port this okay so that's very odd but um I'm gonna work with it I'm gonna I'm gonna try to work with this I manually have to do something to get this to work but um when right now I'm just going to map up the whole scene itself yeah so or on five point oh five consoles nah you can't get banned then so that's what I'm waiting on doing now once it maps the full scene I think I may have to create a custom screen link for the speed or space itself and maybe we could test a video on it I'm not too sure if we could get a video working on the auditorium but um yeah to be honest elemental or um in terms of shark files I really don't think it's gonna be very easy for us to crack because I think each company had like special keys and I think it was still on the server so and I think it's using like AES two fifty six don't hold me by up to that I think but the encryption to that is crazy and I don't even know other right now we're still trying to look into shark files but the likelihood of us trying to decrypt it will be pretty damn difficult I can't say that but um right now um I'm compiling this stuff and holy hell it changes you'll probably heard that I live right next to a train so I do apologize for that but um I'm just trying to see I'm just waiting for this to get done because this is the only space that I had to rebar and then I'm going to uh get this sorted out with the local scene list so I basically have two local scene list I have the one that's like old as hell and let me okay so I think that's what I'm gonna have to do nerd IQ yeah bro I am a nerd for real but what you might call it alright looking at this I I do I know how to code somewhat I'm still learning in the process like I'm trying to take classes on coding but like all of this stuff I'm showing you now was kinda self taught or a little bit and just with the help of my uh like development team but I back when PlayStation home was up I already knew kind of like a lot about home nerds get money what bro how much money you think all of like your favorite game developer right like two K all of the people who be coding your like you know GTA titles and stuff like that they be making bank Bill Gates make bank hey mister super average gamer welcome make you look easy bro I'm a noob when it comes to this like there there's way more oh snap almost knocked out my water but but there's like many people that could do twice as much as I can I'm just I'm just good at home stuff I guess I think I mean and this probably people that could you know recode this in like twenty seconds alright yeah home actually got me into the modding scene like before home I had no idea what exploits were and stuff like that um but PlayStation home actually to be honest kind of not I wouldn't say it gave me the foundation to create a YouTube channel just dealing with modding and like uh stuff like that but yeah like if it wasn't for PlayStation home I wouldn't um you know mess with a lot of the stuff alright I'm just waiting for everything to get mapped so right now it's just taking a little while to map everything because it's generating two scenes I know two people oh yeah oh Blizzo yeah I do remember you hey yeah I used to mod trophies a lot like I I actually have a tutorial on how to mod trophies for the Vita and PlayStation three modding trophies isn't too hard it's just like especially on the Vida is really not alright yeah I have to let me see forty items alright forty two so you can see it going down pretty quickly now we shouldn't have any too much issues I'm gonna put my keyboard off my lap because yeah alright so everything is mapped now for the scene auditorium um I'm gonna take I actually may do this now so what I'm going to do is add a asset to the actual dot scene because I'm going to try to get a movie to show up on here so looking at the XML I have to create a custom screen link so I have to use a a space with any dummy uh dot scene and I need to get screen links for it so I'm going to use any dot scene that I know for sure has anything that's dealing with screen links and I'm going to use that as a reference so in this case I'm gonna be using Konami penthouse cuz I just know where it's located at or I mean I could use anything so Fiva was actually in my face we're gonna use that so right here I'm gonna just type in screen link and this is how the screen links are located so I wanna take this source of this screen link and I'm just gonna basically I'm uh port it to this right here so this right now is how the screen links is going to be operated but what I gotta do is switch this from the FIFA XML and I have to uh port it with I'm gonna port it via with the um what you might call it the actual internal EU stuff and I have to create a new XML which was gonna be this dot scene right here so um let me go here this dot scene file right let me go here this dot scene file right here this core file is the basically it's the cinema screen so it's just let me see let me actually save as this one and I'm gonna use this like as a basic um thing let me go to the actual folder itself how's the online client um in terms of this will it work on Hen yeah online will work on Hen and you could just download like yeah stuff will still be cached and uh yeah but um I'm trying to get a basic screen X M L this is just gonna be a dummy one but I have to make one that's custom right now so I'm gonna call it screen linked but I have to delete like all of the source from this yeah cuz everything is like from here it's like requesting a bunch of stupid stuff from online and I real like yeah this is dealing with meteor R S S we don't need that we basically don't need any of this line of code this is all it needs but we need the reference to the I'm just trying to see where it's like starts and ends so hold on gap asset folder gap object so hold on it I guess it would need that too alright basically this whole line I'm gonna slap it onto this dot scene via right here alright I have to modify the dot scene so much and it's this is kinda confusing me right now and at least the cinema dot special screen should pop up on the actual scene but I'm just trying to make sure I have everything so I won't look too crazy gap talk ah okay so I could mount it as a bar but that will be too much okay so right now I'm just going to change the X M L and this is the file location it should be in this looks pretty correct to me but we will see in a second we will definitely see if this will uh boot up when did you start modding uh PlayStation three error so like maybe twenty twelve twenty thirteen but okay so I did added uh all of this damn stuff my goal is least to get the screen booted up onto this but uh if not we're going to be doing this manually so um let me go back to my X M L I was originally working on Fiva arena scene doesn't really compile with any of this this right here we need to have it correspond with the environments folder so I'm just gonna create a dummy scene right or a dummy folder right here I'm just gonna call it video and we can label a home dot M P four and I can get a random ass video we can mess with oh and we also need to label it as the special screen ID which is cinema screen ID special and this is going to correspond with that alright so the screen links is good and the dot scene should be good so so I gotta be very meticulous and or not meticulous but very keen to where I place this stuff at so alright so cinema auditorium dot scene should correspond with this um then cinema screen link should just be placed right there alright video okay I just wanna make sure I'm mapping everything out so this is how it should be um I know this is internal as well so let's go ahead and I'm gonna create the dot S D C file now and then we're going to via right here make the metadata stuff so right now I'm gonna call this um S C E um cinema auditorium okay I spelled that twice um I'm just gonna call it zero point eighty nine H D K since that's where it came from the makers of this will be can't even talk Sony computer well it's the U E U division Sony computer entertainment Europe um and then I have to give it a description I'm just gonna call this um this or I'm just saying something nice welcome to the cinema auditorium and then I could just have some base stuff this is or this scene is from the zero point eighty nine dev client and I could just put my name here why not alright so that's pretty much it on the thumbnail section we need to uh let me change my viewpoint because I don't like this not list I need details and then I'm going to test game development nah it's gonna be in this folder since this is where our icon is located if y'all remember and yeah so everything should be fine now so save and then what I'm going to do now is back out from here and now if I reload the S D C it should have my correct metadata which it does so now what I'm going to do is um I'm gonna actually take the root name of this metadata and this is what we're gonna be calling it in the actual uh local dot scene for the which I'm gonna call it I can't even think right now for the actual um eighty six client but now I'm going to port it over so I'm gonna go into user directory I'm just gonna drop it in here and if this works I will have a folder where I will port everything at for uh twenties let me decide for each file yeah go ahead so now that's done I need to open up local scene uh for version one point eighty six and now I'm going to create a dummy space and don't you worry guys once I get this part done I will read back in the chat I just don't wanna get um out of touch with this uh I'm gonna use a base scene that I always use which is V me park but I'm gonna place it here and we're just gonna be I'm just gonna create the file name the location so that's good and then now I have to uh set the local scene dot list so it could read so it should be environments home internal home lobbies cinema yeah and then um what I'm gonna do is just copy the root source it is so it could read from that file location alright so home internal S C E S C E stands for the Sony computer entertainment and this is just like their internal stuff uh home lobbies cinema and then I have to get the official dot scene name which I will do right now which is cinema auditorium Nova and I know that's the official uh name and then I'm gonna save so right now I am going to disconnect from this PlayStation three I'm gonna go back to my other PlayStation three and we're going to be loading up uh this client let me make sure it's yeah so my screen will go off right now it should be loading up the other development client when online client goes public do you think there would be a lot of players maybe not the first day but yeah do I prefer U S B or F T P I prefer U S B since of always for dumping stuff uh but F T P what you might call it in terms of file transfer protocol if I have an ethernet cable and I'm trying to transfer over stuff fast and yeah but yeah we already hit an hour and holy snap but seventeen people were watching it thank you for the eighteen likes thank you for anybody who has donated but uh what I'm gonna do now is controller settings let me switch that back alright so right now home should be booting up just fine for me and then yeah have I ever played Jack and Dexter yeah Jack and Dexter is a really good game I have the one two on um PlayStation four as well I have like the ISO dumps on my modded PlayStation three but yeah I'm loading up the one point eighty six client now so you can see how different eighty nine versus uh eighty sixth was like it's something different but um I'm just waiting for stuff to boot up hopefully the scene will boot with any no issues at all if it does then I'm gonna have a kind of a fit because I'm I'm hoping that these spaces can be easily ported it shouldn't have any issues but I know sometimes when the space is really really old um I can run into it yeah I also got it on my Vita as well I I sometimes play it on my Vita I use um FileZilla F T P client but I sometimes dabble with Win S C P I know Win S C P is better from what most people say I just use FileZilla F T P since that's like the main one I always used and I always gotta wait for home to do its thing hopefully it won't take too long to boot up cuz I was adding some stuff to the client the other day but I guess in the meantime while home is booting up let's not waste some any other stuff uh I'm going to be messing with eighty nine and I'm going to be uh porting the other scenes so um I kinda wanna have this I wanna have these scenes in a separate folder because I plan on loading this up to a GitHub just for archival purposes and um I'm just gonna ha- call this um zero point eighty nine dev development scenes and I gotta go to eighty nine so okay my brain is not functioning I gotta go to my old build let me see how this is doing in terms of internally I think it's loading up the catalog now it should be loading just fine if home takes too long I may have to cut off the console and then I'll just load stuff really fast let me see if I do that yeah if I connect it and reconnect it really quickly um then yeah alright so you can see here that the thumbnail of the actual space or whatnot is what you might call it let's see if we have any issues please please don't just boot into the damn space I'm just testing it if it works now I really am not too sure how it will run the metadata and everything popped up which was nice out of element scene is prior to version one point three stack boundaries I'm not too sure if it loads fully up cuz I really wanted the original cinema auditorium to work if not I will literally just try to mount the damn bar in live time and uh see if that works but um yeah uh hello yeah I'm not even too sure why it's not loading but um hope I know I didn't freeze for sure cuz I could get out of this let me see I could go home it could have been me trying to disconnect my console and that could have been the issue yeah I'm not too sure why I loaded as a girl either yeah I probably me disconnecting didn't like it so let me just load Avatar and let me type in my command I got like a pre-made outfit that I could just switch to real quick right now I am trying to test and port scenes to point eighty nine that's what I'm trying to do but I'm not too sure why is there any issues with the dot scene what's this game it's PlayStation home it was a social world that came out for PlayStation three and then um I'm kinda low key angry I am trying to see something alright so what I'm gonna do is maybe this let me do something I'm gonna save this as um I'm gonna call it cinema Nova dot one scene alright yeah that didn't even save as X M L so I just fucked this up hold on I could open this scene okay but alright let me see something real quick I can um I could do this cuz even though this scene wait what the hell alright yeah that should be the base one because there was nothing in it alright alright no I didn't do I I can't even talk today I did do this correctly so what I'm gonna do is go to user directory in this one I am going to go to my environments and now I am going to try to alright so what I'm going to do is call this the original or really ain't the original it's edited so I'm gonna just call it original edit I'm going to switch this back to here and I am going to uh rename this to cinema auditorium dot scene cuz this shouldn't have any issues now because this is like the main one cuz I'm not gonna mess with the dot scene do I have a Blue Yeti mic I I had one before or yeah I have an old one I have like the blue um what you might call it yeah I am uh coding kind of or not really but I'm just messing with XML files yeah I'm coding in live time this makes me curious consider we could import music for listen at home into anything that's starting stars can you import any videos yeah you can um import any videos what you might call it I did add a Daft Punk uh one more time via for what you might call it I could show you what I did with Theater Six today and sorry for any audio implications if it's causing yeah but in the meantime while we secondly tried it or trying to test this again for the second time I am going to go back to point eighty nine build and we're going to um get these spaces into its correct file locations or I'm trying to create like an archive so in this folder I'm just gonna do the same thing so water test development uh the ball physics one cuz that's what I'm gonna do I'm just gonna have them separated so I can rebuild it later and then I can just archive it for testing purposes so test game I didn't do I did test video okay now thing about this is I have to figure out where everything is located at um alright my brain is kinda hurting so test is literally called environment mini game tutorial alright so I'm trying to do this the easiest way alright so each folder will definitely have this and then um in the meantime I I can't even talk in the meantime while home is trying to load up and do its own thing I will um try to boot into that scene I'm not too sure if I have to mount this as a bar file and that will take some or won't take time I just have to load it but I really don't wanna do that method because it's not really useful to the end user and I don't wanna teach people like more commands when I have to release this yeah the reason why it probably was at the default avatar is literally ripped out home alright you take care thank you for uh joining the livestream I appreciate you but wow twenty one people twenty people just watching me do this y'all crazy cuz I thought this will be like boring for most people uh but um as home is loading up I am going to try to set these uh scenes up so environments ball test alright so everything got its environments folder now we have to do we could do the ball physics one since uh that's that that's considered a scripted tutorial scene which makes sense since it's running a script to do that probably some lower script that's unencrypted and then um okay so I'm gonna go here alright that's boom so that's that now I am going to uh let me see here alright so home just booted up without no issues it does take some time but the initial boot should be fine let's try again now hopefully we have or don't run into any damn issues cuz I'm really not wanting that think it froze on me yeah it definitely just froze what the hell I don't even know where it says it froze at seen this pro prior to version one point three blah 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 it's not even file not found error maybe cuz I maybe cuz I have a screen link XML in there and it doesn't like it if that's the case I will just delete it cuz I really don't wanna maybe that's it I'll delete the screen link cuz if I can't but just because it's one point three it shouldn't have any issues uh but I'll just restart my console again see this is kind of the process I have to do in terms of developing it's a lot of testing and it's a lot of debugging I have to do in a process but no worries I'm not too worried about it because I I've ran into worse issues in this and I've powered through and this is what I have to do when trying to uh patch updates in other clients so um yeah environments alright so the water development test scene is here and to be honest I could just make a regular client just to test stuff but I like to do everything at once so when I compile this it's not giving me any issues so the video test scene will go here and then uh need to make sure mini game alright okay so arcade tutorial testing alright the test think the test one was the tic-tac-toe joint ah there's actually maybe more um test game development I could probably tell if this the tic-tac-toe one I'm not too sure I'll just call it test mini game just to uh emphasize that and then um we could just add it to the scene list as we go arcade tutorial alright so it's actually another folder I gotta make but I'll just um alright so arcade development test zero point eighty nine alright so I'm just gonna slap environments here and I'm just prepping this now so I can uh and then let me see something real quick right now if I really just wanted to speed through this I can uh work on that yeah home takes forever to boot up but um yeah that's the whole thing it's like me breaking something just to try to fix it alright so home has booted up again what I'll do is boot into uh actually before I'll show before I'll try to like probably freeze my damn console again I will show you what I was working on last night before I like went to bed I got one of the um I could show you what I was working on so S E E yeah so auditorium six what I did I basically I turn off all of the online um functionalities for the scene itself so it could run videos and if somebody was asking me on if I could run custom like videos and content um this should be your answer did Rockstar ever had a home space no but they did have like some content so let me go to load Avatar but you probably hear from the screen now let me actually turn down the but yeah this video that's actually uh playing right now is like showcasing PlayStation home um from its beta stage the guy that's like showcasing this is Jack Buser and um he was just showing off like PlayStation home before it actually launched so this is just an example of me getting the one of the cinemas to work but uh let me go to my Harbors Studio real quick yeah there were like some Rockstar stuff there was like the Rockstar I can't even talk Rockstar t-shirt I remember rebuilding that one manually uh but yeah so hopefully right now while I'm like multitasking doing both of these um I need to create the damn dot SDCs for each space and that's gonna be okay this thing just freezes on boot and I don't understand why last time it didn't freeze but let me see if I can get out of the freeze cuz I I still could type home commands which is weird yeah I don't know XML bar blah 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 alright so cinema auditorium looks like it's giving me a pain so what I'll do is work on another space really really quickly and we're just gonna go from there so um it should just be just fine but to be honest what I could do is I'll literally will drop the bar file in here just to see if it boots and then um we're gonna test out the I don't know um the mini game development nah we can do the water test develop development space so I don't know if it's just even like a dot scene issue cuz if it's missing a dot scene we could always uh alright take care Lord in Black I appreciate you are we able to link the free movie app city TVs I mean technically yeah but the lower scripts will be encrypted unless you like rebuild it from scratch and somehow like I don't know import like the live stream and turn on like certain flags then yeah we definitely could do that but um what I'm going to do now is we're gonna do like the water scene though for um I don't even know if there's any water scenes in here but uh hopefully it won't like rewrite something because that would be pretty trash alright so environment alright so water tutorial and then uh oh let me not delete that but uh yeah we're gonna go to water tutorial that scenes and now we're going to uh just rename it water development test I guess we're gonna call it S E E as well um I'm really not too caring about the SDC right now but just for uh you know tutorial purposes I guess I can uh just slap that on here and then and then what I'm going to do is Sony Sony Computer Entertainment Europe alright and then I have to this space is a development scene that was utilized to test um I don't know water functionality in home for the zero point eighty nine client I could write and then I can uh just have that here and then water and then that should be straight so yeah also I am not too sure why my user directory is not saving my save files so uh that's actually kinda pissing me off so I'll change that now I have to look at my um I'll go to my backup client since I have backup data I'm gonna go here real quick and I'm gonna go to my save file cuz the save file doesn't save on the actual uh PlayStation three hardware um but it saves on like the console itself so at least I know that's done um that's done now what I gotta do here is just very simple drop this folder into user directory and then alright yeah so that actually was never in the client itself so oh wrong folder or wrong program I just gotta restart home and hopefully the water scene will pop up and it will just run do we have the Zai space yeah we could actually go to the Zai space if you want to after this really quickly Red Bull Beach um I couldn't really if you hmm let me see somebody said I'm going to try to see um I can open up Noesis really quickly and I could check all of the Red Bull scenes I have because if we have it and I just was dumb and didn't really look into it and probably over labeled it then I definitely can do that um but give me a moment that may take a little while let's see what we have in terms I have like so many folders and I this is what I have to like go through just to get to one space so it's gonna take a while since I have like five hundred spaces it has to load what is the Zai City continuum oh wait wasn't that I think I know what space you're talking about was it like a personal space cuz if it was then I don't know I remember some Zai space being like kinda weird vertical apartment I don't know if it's this I know we don't have that but um according to the livestream itself she recorded this at twenty thirteen I don't know if the space is older cuz that's why I kinda like I think Zai stuff is old though cuz I feel like if we ever got Zai would be decryptable because um I don't think it would have any issues does people still play this online oh no oh okay 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 uh Zai should be old though let me do a quick YouTube search there was a Zai too I may have to look into that a little bit later Zai uh PlayStation home continuum I do remember this though I do yeah this is the Zai space I remember cuz I remember just going there one time and I thought it was pretty weird I I'm really kinda weird that like I thought Zai was very popular I would have thought we would have seen that by now for sure um that's actually odd but I will keep a look on that ah see twenty thirteen was a weird year because I think that's Ah, see, twenty thirteen was a weird year, because I think that's when they implemented shark. Like, I don't know the exact date of when the one point eighty three. Yeah, I don't know. I felt like any, hold on, let me see this. One point eighty three, uh, PlayStation home update. That will kind of tell me. I don't know. See, it's hard to even find patch notes to like home now, because like. Bruh, when was the last update? Alright, so. We have the loader for it. Alright, so one development scene did work. Alright, so we got the mini game water. The water isn't like brown, though. But, uh, yay, we could give ourselves a pat on the back for that. Uh, did the metadata actually show up? Alright, so I am pretty proud that we got this to run. Let me, um. Alright, so if you want to kind of see what I do in live time. I have like a little patch and this is how I create my patches. Like I create like a dummy folder. And I literally, uh, just. Copy the work I did and I just slap it into the other folder. So. And I create this little dummy list and then I'll make it pretty after, but new spaces. Um, we did get the test video or no, 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 water development scene. And I just want the official name to what I called it as. What the hell did I say it was? So the SCE water development scene did work, um. But I'm going to try to. Load the damn bar, so load bar. Or mount bar, I think it's called. Load bar. I forgot how to freaking mount bar files and it's gonna drive me nuts, because if I couldn't mount the damn bar file and then, uh. Let me see. Mount bar. Alright, and then. Ah, damn, I don't even know what I labeled it as. So it did mounted it. Bruh, if I freeze, I'm gonna be pissed. It mounted, but I don't think, ah, no. Alright. Alright, so. That's somewhat, I, if it did mount it successfully, which is fine, but. Now I have to restart my console, but we're gonna do the other scenes and I'm just rip through each one pretty damn quickly. So what I'm gonna do is the test video scene. Alright, so what I'm gonna do since this got screen links into it. We're just gonna fix the screen links now. Dot MP four. Yeah, I'm not too sure why the auditorium is not working, but it's really starting to take me off. And to be honest, I may already have that scene like the probe and everything, but I really want that particular version since it's really old. I don't know why, but it mounted at the bar as the eighty nine. There's gotta be a way, like there literally has to be a way. This is gonna like make me tick, because I like, I know for sure I could get this to work and it's like not working with me. But that's okay, I'm gonna push through and we're gonna be doing something else. Alright, so we're doing the video screen tutorial space, so. Alright, so SCE test video blah blah blah. Europe, and then I could just make, I kind of like how I did the other one. So yeah, that's gonna be like my basis for like all of these. It's gonna look pretty damn similar for the description. So I don't even know what I said. The space is a development scene that was utilized to test videos, yeah, to test. Videos and I guess screen links. For the zero point eighty nine client, blah, blah, blah. Alright, that's fine. Alright, and then I could import that folder right here. Alright. And actually, I'll, um. Turn this screen off real quick and I'm going to, uh. Let me see, I'm gonna do some research really fast. Because I think somewhere on my computer I might have, um. Like I had a way where I can mount files, so. Now, how can I load it? Bruh. This is confusing me. Dump, nah, because I know if you're, you could dump it, but I'm not trying to dump it. Let me see if it was like load bar. Ah, hold on. Hmm. This is crazy, because I'm trying to, uh. I could look into it later. I don't think it's really important, but I'll try to, uh, get another scene to work. But somebody said they want to see some Zai spaces. I could do that for you really quickly. I think we have like maybe one or two. No, we have like a couple of Zai spaces. Excuse me, we don't just have like one or two. I think we have like. I don't even know, like four or five. Let me see real quick. Sorry about that. I just needed to do some, uh, research. Cause I was trying to figure out how can I mount the bar, but. Guaranteed probably after this live stream when I'm not even like showcasing it, um. But yeah, here's a side like Alphazon Hexalathon space, but, um. Oh, no worries. Thank you for watching. Got him. Video screen. Ah, damn, hold on. Alright, good. I don't think there's anything that's like really dodgy or it's like it's requesting other stuff. So much text I have to figure out. Alright, so in this case. Don't tell me I froze. Nah, I think it's just taking a while. Confusion of the highest order. That's how I feel. Like I'm so confused on how like certain stuff is working versus why it's not working. Yeah, but here's a Zai space. Um, there's also maximum tilt. We have the mini game, but for some reason it doesn't like to rebuild in a program we use. So I would have to like manually try to, uh, rebuild it, but we got like actually. Wanima, uh, one of our offline content devs, basically rebuilt the mini game. Where you got me? Oh, yeah, you can see here like this is one of the Zai spaces. Um, here's another one. Zai Alphazon three, uh, the brittle maze, the game. Um, I think I did find it, but it was encrypted sadly, so I couldn't really do anything with it. Alright, so let me make sure. But I'm trying to set up the other scene itself, because I don't want to run into any issues, so test development scene. Video tutorial screen. Uh, no, I'm not trying to create a screen link. I was just trying to copy this. Alright, but yeah, here's another Zai space. Uh, this would launch the like maze mini game and then you would have to complete it if I recall. But yeah, this was like the Zai space. Um, does I find a white hall? This wasn't even a space, but I think it was just some screen. Can you get cache data from PS3s that are yellow Lloyd? Uh, yeah and no. The simple answer is that like, yeah, if you get your PlayStation three repaired, then yeah. But, um, since like the PS3s, uh, hard drives are encrypted via with something called a EID root key and every PlayStation three has it. No matter if it's like a debug system, fat slim, whatever, whatever, um, each PS3 has a special key and. Basically it's encrypted, so the only way to get that key is if you had a jailbroken console and then like decrypt the EID root key. Then you could use a tool on a PlayStation or the PC, excuse me, to pull data off that way, but it's not like you could just take your PlayStation three's hard drive. Slap it onto your PC and read all the contents. And the reason why I tell you, you know, do that is to, you know, come by piracy, not have modding and stuff, but, um. Yeah, in the meantime, while I'm getting other stuff set up, I will be showcasing some Zai for you guys. But, uh, I think we're done with the test video scene. So test video scene is good. We did the water video one, uh, we're gonna do this one next, the mini game tutorial. I don't even think it has reference to damn tic tac toe. I need to make sure, uh. That's talking about. So many builds to look through. Yeah, so yeah, there is a mini game, so it wouldn't even pop the hell up. I'm gonna just play it safe and hold on. Yeah, I can read the lower scripts here. Alright, just to play it safe, I'm gonna do this. Have objects that come from the old client. I'm gonna port it to the new client. Hopefully that doesn't like interfere. Well, let me see which items it's getting extracted. I mean, I don't think this will cause any issues, yeah. Or this is from the game itself, so, yeah. But yeah, here's a Zai. I already see some, I know there was like some teleport stuff here. Ooh. If you guys know anything about Zai, I'm assuming this is a video screen. I could probably check later on. But if you could tell me if there was a certain video that was broadcasted here, I can, but if not, I can, uh, put a Zai themed, uh, video here. For you guys to check out. If you guys will vibe with that, I'm assuming this may be a video screen. Oh, there's like a bunch of, maybe this is a mini game. Let me read the chat. It was just used for a cutscene. Yeah, that's what they were. There's a weird Zai room and I did like a little East Egg. For some reason, I just call it Dev Blue Room. I have no damn idea what is this for. Somebody said it was for Zai and then, yeah. But, um, I'm not even too sure. This is like a room that was used for Zai. I don't know the official purpose for it, but, um, yeah. I still have the private beta that you was used. Hold, hold, whoa, 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 whoa. What did I just read? I still have the private beta that was used for testing new features on my own account, um. Let me ask you, do you have the original private beta to PlayStation home? Um, that is like still intact, like if it's. If so, please get in contact with me, because that old data will be very useful for online with like SVMLs and stuff. As well, um, if you still have that PSN account that is attached to that, uh, private beta for home. You could get in contact with me and I want to see if that PSN link. Has like that. Wasn't there emission videos that would go up there? Probably, because that's looking at the script, it looks like that. But, um, let me go and try to. Try to port these other scenes. Alright, so nothing pops up for mini game tutorial, which is good. We're going to, uh, do this scene and we're gonna add this, uh, SDC for it. I'm just trying to do all of them pretty much at once. But, uh, let's go to environments to this one. I'm just gonna open up this test SDC and, uh. Yeah, so. Alright, so. I don't even know if I did the video one yet, but, uh. Not seen, no, SDC. Okay, so this one, I'm just trying to copy and paste it, so, yeah, and then, uh. So SCE A. Test mini game, I guess I could do. Mini game development. Uh, same thing. Sony Computer Entertainment. Europe, uh, this space is development scene that was utilized to test, um, basic Lua script. Mini games for the. okay. Oh, I'm not done yet. I need to uh I may have to go back to eighty-nine and get a thumbnail and I'm pretty dumb for not like uh I don't know if this is the correct thumbnail. But um I may have to rename this though cuz I'm not too sure if for that cuz this could be like the mini game space with like the tic tac toe and um this could be something different though. What I'm gonna do here irregardless is to uh let me see the fuck. Ah, hold on. I think I may have a conflicting situation. I may have to call this uh mini game tutorial one. Because I don't want this to overwrite the other mini game tutorial we have. Yeah, whatever. Hold on, let me change the dot scene really quickly. Alright, so that shouldn't have any issues. Alright, so let me see something really quick. Alright, so that went through, of course. Now me going into this really quickly, uh let me check the S D C for this. Cuz I need to check, I'm gonna probably restart home very soon since uh I need to verify that this is the mini game, e- either if it's the mini game or tic tac toe space cuz if it's the tic tac toe space, I need to go back to eighty-nine and pull the actual scene. Alright, and before I even get started on working on the next scene, let me just verify that I do have the video scene in here. Alright, so it's there, whatever. Alright, we're good to go now and then once I verify which is which, or if it is the correct one, then I can uh start. Okay, I will need to check if the downloads are folder. Ah dang. Twenty-six likes, y'all guys are crazy. Thank you guys for your live, or you know, checking out my livestream. Hopefully I'm not boring y'all guys too much. Um, cuz I know it deals with uh, you know, more of a development side of things, but I kinda like doing this in live time just so you could see like how my workflow is. Plus on how I utilize stuff for the um offline client. But thank you guys for tuning in. Really, one point two gigabytes? Is that actually? Um, here's what I'll do real quick. Um, are you in the actual Discord server? Hold on. Cuz I will um actually right now will uh give me one second. I'm gonna invite you to the destination home server if you're not in there. And I will personally PM you after like I'm done live streaming. And I really wanna know more information about that because beta stuff is very um I may actually like DM you right now, to be honest, because so here's the Discord link you could join from. Mad Dog Psychotics. Um, my name is Nagato on there and um if you join that server right now, uh I'll send you a friend request because with the one point two gigabytes, right? Are you seeing that via from P S N and you could actually download it? Or that's like actual home cache data that you have. Because we could really, really utilize your cache data and your cache data in particularly will be very useful. It doesn't let you re-download it. Um, is this via from P S N? Because I could still pull the PKG link from that and I can um we could probably get a PKG link. There is methods on how to pull the PKG. And we could possibly uh get it that way. Alright, um, are you in the landing channel right now? Because I'm looking for you right now. Cuz if you joined the um, the link from what I sent you, I can uh DM you. But yeah, I highly recommend uh just joining our Discord server and then I could type to or talk to you personally. And I could possibly pull that PKG link cuz any beta trial stuff, there's probably some bars in our thing. P S N store, okay. Where do I get five point oh five uh? Oh, no, where did I uh get five point oh five gamelinks? Um just using Google basically, but um I'm going to see. Ah, I don't know if I did this wrong. Yeah, if you guys do have the beta of home, please get in contact with me for that. Um, it's really, really helpful and useful if you guys play the beta. Um, but oh, but if it's from the P S N store Mad Dog, um, we could still probably pull the PKG link from other means and other like methods, but uh you can see here, the development scene did work. I just gotta check if the test mini game scene works. Alright, so it's tic tac toe. What can I do? I will uh I'm gonna try to uh I'll actually uh include my avatar in this really quickly. But yeah. If you're in the Discord, just send me a uh friend request if you don't have one, but here's my actual Discord as well if you wanna PM me. Ninety-eight thirty-eight. Let me make sure it has my ID. It should be. Yeah, it's ninety-eight thirty-eight. But um alright, so what I'll do is create a little um gonna create a little photo right now because this is the tic tac toe space. It's not like the eighty-nine arcade. But let me freaking uh haven't really done anything in terms of it is, but I have to uh create that. Alright, so I'm just gonna use this as a base image. Let me save as. Okay. Now, I'm going to really, really, really quickly, um I don't even know why the S D C didn't save though. But this is gonna be the test image and hopefully it will pop up once I uh okay, so I actually will need to that's what I'm gonna call it. Test Arcade Development uh eighty-nine. I need to port that to disk space. Or I'm gonna move this to cuz this is like the mini game. Cut. I'm paste that here. And then this one, the game development one. I'm just gonna save that as that one. Um, but now what I need to do is ah, I gotta make sure cuz I'm, I don't wanna mess up on this. I gotta make sure the S D C is straight. Yeah, I messed up on the S D C for sure. Um test game development eighty-nine. Yeah, so I think the scene is so old that it won't even freaking load it. Alright, so we got those done. It's state in beta trial and that, hold on, and that is from two thousand nine, no image Jordan package, but you'll see from the image on Discord, the only thing that seems right for me, if I can get into a other account, I know they've completely removed it. No, if it's still generating on P S N and I'm looking at it now. Uh let me check your Discord. Let me see something. Are you sure that is PlayStation Home? Like, does it show the actual logo itself? Cuz that's weird. But if that's it, um, I could probably get the PKG link still. Hold on, I'm about to add you really, really quickly. But that's crazy if it is cuz I'm, I'm gonna try to get it cuz there's a method where I could still pull the PKG links, um, cuz if it's still active on Sony servers, I could rip the PKG link, yeah. Oh, hey Adam, what's up? Um, right now we're testing out development scenes or I'm, I was porting eighty-nine scenes from the old build. And I was trying to incorporate it for the um one second, I'm, I heard what you were saying, or I'm hearing myself talk back, or I'm hearing myself talk back to myself, so I'm just trying to focus and trying to uh fix things before uh porting stuff over. So um, right now I am just trying to compile the patch for you guys. And okay, so the video scenes and that is done. So the video scenes and that scene is done. Mini game is done. Okay, so just to make sure I won't run into any issues via with the arcade tutorial, I'm probably gonna have to make a manual uh space or I'm probably gonna have to make a manual um picture for this. No, actually I don't because I already ported it over. So let me uh just put this here. Arcade. I think my goal for this livestream is to just man, or try to get the eighty-nine development scenes done. And I probably will call it quits. So after I'm getting all the development scenes done cuz I do have other stuff to attend to today. Um, that's what I'm gonna be focusing on, but think we're making good progress. Alright, so arcade cabinet. Uh, I'm just copying stuff from the old um description, so it's just easier. So this space is a development scene. Oh snap, did I spell development wrong? I think I did. Oopsies. I think I made a, a grammatical error. Let me make sure I didn't uh do that for the other ones. Yeah, I just made a ton of grammatical errors. That is kinda bad. Okay, so luckily I caught that now though. Um yeah. Let me just go to environments and um development. So I'm just trying to fix my grammatical errors if I had any cuz uh I clearly, clearly did and that's okay. But um, what I'll do in a second is rewrite everything, so I already know for a fact that the water development scene is fine. So let me just replace that with that one. So water development scene was good. Um, the test video scene was good as well. The mini game development scene was good. I just have to, you know, verify that my, I don't wanna have any grammatical errors and I need to do the arcade development one now, so that's what we focusing on. I just noticed that. And I needed to get it fixed, so let me make sure I spelled cabinet right cuz then now I know uh what you might call it. Does eighty-nine water work on one point eighty-six? Um, in terms of what space and thank you guys for the likes. I think the screen itself, what uh like the S C water development scene so old that it, it's just, it's a miracle that it's running, but the water is running if you could see very closely. It's just like, it doesn't really have, it's just have like a muddy texture though. But um, what I'm going to do now is fix this really quick. Sony Computer Entertainment Europe, okay. Now we're gonna go to the thumbnail section. I called this the test arcade eighty-nine space. Yeah. And uh, okay. Okay, this seat base is a development scene that was utilized to utilized to test basic Lua script mini games. Mini games for arcade cabinets. mini games for arcade cabinets that was that was utilized to test alright so I seen another grammatical error that is trash okay so alright so me having my grammatical errors was a good thing since I can verify that what you might call it alright so I also need to verify that uh and okay so just to like ensure that I'm not tweaking or anything I'm gonna drop my update patch folder which should have everything okay and um let me see and I think I guess if it's okay I'm just trying to make sure that um everything is straight so I did the video tutorial stuff now I just copied okay I just wanna make sure like everything is like straight alright now I gotta set the local scene list that's like the primary like focus now okay so so I'm gonna do the arcade one now let me just open up the dot scene and uh I'm going to go and label this as it's supposed to be so yeah the local scene list are so SE arcade test cabinet environments um arcade tutorial one and it's going to just be called uh this and then just wanna verify that um that is done and I don't think I've uh put this into the client yet cuz it will tell me yeah um and then I'm gonna go ahead and put it in the patch update because I don't think it has any issues and then I'm just gonna verify everything update has everything uh last one we need to do is the ball physics space and then um let me just go ahead and I'm gonna rename this as scripted scene tutorial one cuz I think there's another one for the eighty-six development client that I've put in there and I don't want uh I don't want stuff to like intertwine per se alright so changing those values to one will read it from a different content or basically from a different file path so that's straight and then um I need to create the SDC file alright now just trying to hurry up with this one so this will be called um what the hell did I say it was the ball physics development alright so and then uh alright so this one is I'm gonna say the spaces development scene that was utilized to test um in-game physics I can't even spell physics um this is trash hold on I'm gonna read the chat in a second right now so don't you worry cuz I don't wanna neglect that trying to remember the login details if they were as a dev scene in there specifically to test nice oh yes there is a development I don't know if you're talking about this scene there's a scene like this that tests like day and night I'm gonna show you right now if you're still in the live stream yeah but there's a scene where you could test like the night sky and it's called day and night sample it's like it has like a Japanese garden type thing but uh yeah alright so that is done but yeah here's like the atmos it's just basically testing the atmosphere and it's ran as like sort of a mini game even though it's like really not alright so I'm just hoping to God I did everything right okay so Sony Computer Entertainment Europe okay then let me save this dot SDC and what I'm going to do now is move over to just gonna drop this into user directory folder and then we're gonna create the uh the needed parameters for the local scene list so alright and then after I test if all of the spaces are done I have to recompile the local scene list um in alphabetical order and then um everything will be fine right now so alright so right now I need to uh get the SDC again and I'm just compiling the stuff for these so this is the ball physics space okay and I need to just ensure that uh I'm gonna make sure the scene is alright so that's that and then the root of this folder alright so alright cool this should be everything and now I'm gonna reload home so kind of a very quick speed through of what I was doing I usually try to explain but uh yeah dang I've been live streaming for two hours okay that's kinda crazy yeah hopefully I'm like after I test these spaces I'm going to just test out the scene I am going to also uh make sure all the metadata is correct then I will um oh make sure I'll have all of these stuff in the latest patch and then yeah but yeah thank you guys for the twenty-eight likes thank you guys for the twenty views um I really appreciate these cuz I know I do them randomly and I um you know this is just something I do in the meantime to kinda give you guys a backlog of how I am working via for like home and stuff but but I think we did make made some um incredible strides for today um even though the scene cinema auditorium is giving me a little bit of trouble that's totally fine um I think even right now what I'll do is even uh I'll even recompile the scene that's what I was trying to say um I'm gonna just remap the scene and uh yeah wanna just unbar it again and then I'll uh start from there oh thank guys are crazy you really don't have to donate like seriously these um advertise or advertisements but these live streams are just for you guys to you know to enjoy and just to see the element work sessions you really don't have to uh you know be money every time or you know for that but uh you thank you guys for you know um donating but once again any donation is not going to the destination home project it's going to my uh YouTube and bring back to just like stuff you know stuff in terms of like YouTube donations but yeah I really do appreciate you guys for uh you know the love and support just for eighteen people showing up and leaving twenty-eight likes and just always tuning into me hearing me ramble on about like nerdy stuff all day uh dealing with PlayStation home that's why and um yeah thank you James I really appreciate it and I think you left me a um a question discord I will answer it after the live stream but let me go ahead and cancel out some uh Chrome browser stuff cuz it's uh what you might call it but yeah we're just waiting for home to reboot and do its thing it will take a little while but um yeah alright not too sure why the live stream is lagging right now just trying to close out some applications making sure like the stream is okay oh somebody asked me for Red Bull and I I need to check cuz I somebody asked Red Bull and I didn't know alright so somebody I just wanna make sure like cuz somebody I had something called rate labeled Red Bull hub and then there's something called Red Bull Beach hopefully I didn't overlook that but I'm checking checking Oasis right now alright so that's doing its thing let me actually close out the oh snap there's so many uh folders open alright so home did boot up okay so let me see if all the spaces are running so the physical space is running the arcade cabinet development let me make sure these scenes are working though how is the live stream is it lagging right now or is it uh right now we're just testing development scenes uh for some reason the ball didn't drop because it's missing like the mini games away I don't even know I'm just testing like development scenes right now but I'm just trying to see if like uh anything is having an issue okay alrighty oh they spawned me like literally right in the damn game itself so alright so the scene does boot up um let me see something teleport I'm not too sure but at least the scene quote-unquote does boot up alright tell me how the stream looks now does this looks like Red Bull Beach to you or what you might call it hold on I'm going to make my screen a little bit bigger so you could kinda see what I'm saying so uh you'll probably see it let me try to like overwrite hold on give me one second alright so you should see my PC I think this well what this is it should be uh but I'm assuming this is just Red Bull uh the hub or beach cuz I know you could walk here but it's weird I feel like I could walk I don't know if it's like you could actually walk out to this section yeah cuz this looks like the main area right here but um let me see yeah this one is like a different um Red Bull Beach I don't know alright you have a great day mister super average gamer thank you for watching the live stream I appreciate you but I don't know but uh I'm going to I'm having an issue with my screen not screen length but one of the mini core games so I'm just gonna go to my uh alright um script scene tutorial uh let me see what's the damn difference this is odd okay so um maybe that's the issue okay maybe I need to uh this is maybe a little issue cuz some of the mini games the ball one let me see something alright so here's this is this difference this does look a little different doesn't it but it looks like the one with the air race though is this the beach or this is something else I don't know this does look like the damn beach though this doesn't look like air race This doesn't look like air race, cuz let me go to air race. Bruh, maybe we did have it, yeah, hold on, cuz beach is eleven thousand kilobytes, this is that, so we may do have Red Bull. That's it, that's it, okay. So I did have it and I probably just mislabeled it, oh man, now I feel kinda stupid. Alright, well. Alright, so give me a second, cuz I'm going to uh. Well, that will be in um, whatchamacallit. Or I had it labeled correctly, alright, so this will be in version patch one point twenty. Yeah, cuz air race is literally just these things right here, uh, the beach, okay, 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 so we do have the beach. I will re- rebuild it to the best of my abilities. Alright, but let me go back to the PlayStation three, I'm gonna minimize my uh work screen or actually. Let me turn back on uh the. Alright, so PSD should be back onto the live screen right now. Um, we did fix the development scenes a little bit, however, I need to change the categories. I don't know if this one is like this though, I think I can initialize the mini game. I don't know, yeah, I can initialize the little mini game. I need to. I need to change the dot scene categories for the list. Alright, so this is gonna be, I need to figure out the games that have uh the completed scene into it. So the arcade tutorial has it, video tutorial has it, and the arcade, oh yeah, so, alright, alright, alright. Damn. Alright, this is gonna be a little confusing for me. But in the meantime, I will try to build re, I will try to build Red Bull, I could work on the development scenes later. Um, cuz I basically have them all done, but uh, let me see. Red Bull Beach, I don't think I have like the official uh, whatchamacallit. But yeah, I'll transfer Red Bull Beach now, um, that will be attempting to get mapped very soon, so I'm just waiting for it to uh transfer over. Uh, hell nah, hold on, I'll wait till like the whole damn scene, cuz then um. And then I gotta make a pretty picture for it and stuff, so. So here's Red Bull Beach, um, I'm gonna go ahead and use my tool uh from Gaz, shouts out to him, he, this is all his work. This is where the magic really happens, um, and then I'm going to make that and then we're gonna get like the general SDC information, so let me just go to, I guess, YouTube really quickly. And then we're gonna hopefully just boot that into it and then I have to fix the dot scene, so there's a lot of stuff I have to uh fix. Red Bull Beach. Because hopefully somebody has like the original uh SDC and it had like a. Red Blue float tag. Alright, so uh, we got that, Red Bull Air Race. I don't know if I have the original thumbnail to this uh space. Was it like, I wanna see if she booted into it or she was already there, um, if not, I'll make a custom one and then uh, yeah. I'll just make a custom one, if I can, but I have a PlayStation three hen, are you trying to run home off a hen because you can't? But. I'm really trying to fix this. This is gonna like low-key piss me off. Alright, let me um, cuz gotta do this now, cuz I have to set it into a correct directory. Alright, so. I just made a. Arcade tutorial. Yeah, but I have to make sure I rewrite it, okay, so. Alright, so the arcade tutorial should be fixed, um, the ball physics one, um, it will have the same issue, but uh, let me open up this dot scene and. Alright, so scripted at scene one, 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 cuz the little scripts need to run from that directory, that's why it probably didn't boot up. Alright, so um. And I need me, uh, I need to make sure that I dump this in the development folder where I'm having my pad chat. Then I could create the pictures for y'all guys later, um, but. Yeah. Let me make sure, well, let me close Oasis down, um. I don't care about that, um. Mini game development scene looks fine though, it does. Video development, I think it had an issue too, because um, I think it maybe wanted the configuration of the completed, so uh. Yeah, for this one, I just gotta switch to uh that profile per se. And then um, I just need to test the patch that is not running. Let me see. Alright. Then I gotta make sure Red Bull, I'm gonna do that really quickly now, alright, so it's still rebuilding Red Bull, um. Okay, I just wanna make sure like, I feel like just brute forcing the hell or, I don't know. Actually, let me do this, cuz I don't wanna make sure like the patch is messed up, I know theater was the only thing I had in this folder. Okay, I'm going to uh. Alright, so I'm just re-adding everything that I know is officially fixed from that location, so when I add it in the patch later, um, it's all good, so, yeah. And I'm just gonna verify that now, so the SDC is there. Yes, it doesn't have that little uh issue in terms of that. And just to know. And just to know that the patch is all fine, I'm gonna literally just copy all of my work, so I can know for sure. You got a PSP you want to sell to me, is this the new two point iron client, oh, yeah, I'm using the basis of that, I'm gonna go ahead and get some lunch, oh. You have a great lunch, but um, this is the two point O client, this is version um, one point twenty-one update I am working on. But uh, do I have an extra PSP, uh, no. Alright, uh, Mad Dog, we will talk soon about that. But let's see if Red Bull is done, nah. But you could buy PSPs for like really cheap though. Damn, well, in the meantime, I guess let me create a thumbnail and that's another thing I have to uh take in consideration. Thank you for uh letting me know that, Red Bull um Beach, I guess. And then, okay, this folder is empty. Alright, so it's rebuilding its folder structure, you can see here, um, I'm just waiting till it, it's fully done. But yeah, thank you guys for the thirty likes, thank you guys for whoever donated into the stream and then yeah. Yeah, I would also get a um Vita over a PlayStation Portable, because basically a Vita is just a hyper PSP and you could literally play any PSP game, if it's uh modded of course, on your PlayStation Vita, which I um usually use that via with adrenaline. If you guys wanna see a cool vi- video for um, whatchamacallit. For Vita, if you're not a Vita fan, I highly recommend to um check out this video from me. Um, I created this in twenty twenty, like on January first, so New Year's Day. And um, if you wanna learn everything about the Vita and just what a mod of Vita can do, um, yeah. But yeah, PlayStation Portable is still uh, whatchamacallit. Yeah, but the Vita um is a very powerful system, I currently own four Vitas, I own a white Japanese system, a orange neon Japanese system and two one thousands, uh, just like the regular black ones, the with the OLED screen, and I also own a PlayStation TV, I love the Vita. When PlayStation Home is going to be released, um, the offline client two point O, that base one is released, but the online one is still being in the works and um, I'm actually gonna be working on the online client a little bit today, so. This is just something for me to get prepped up uh for you guys, but. Alright, so we got ninety items to go, shit. Oh, that's what's up, I really want the Hotsune Miku Vita just to have, I think the Vita is like a pretty looking system, especially like the OLED. What's up, Weasel News? Figment. Salt shooter. But. Um, why is it not building, rebuilding it? Alrighty, I'm just waiting for the Red Bull Beach to do its thing, but it's like missing textures. Oh, in the meantime, I guess I could create a dummy SDC for Red Bull and then uh we can run with that. It's not Red Bull Air Race, Red Bull Beach is um the thing. Or we're gonna call this uh. Red Bull uh Beach. Alright, I gotta create the SDC, alright, so everything's done now with the STCs and stuff, I don't know why I tried to archive that. But yeah, luckily, we got the eighty-nine scenes to work for the most part, um, but I'm gonna run through this like lightning speed real quick. Alright, so SDC, let me plop that here, um, alright, I got the official metadata for the scene as well, which is good. Alright, the name, Red Bull. Alright, so Red Bull with the creators, I guess, um. Okay, and then right here, Red Bull Beach, I'm just gonna save this. Alright, and then I'm gonna swing this over here real quick, cut, beach. Yeah, this is definitely Red Bull Beach, looking at it now, because I don't remember this uh thing. I'm not trying to create that. So environment and then. Alrighty, so right now, I'm just trying to uh. I'm just trying to create the metadata for this now, or not the metadata, but set the parameters so we can um load this into the offline client. Let me close this out. Um, just wanna make sure, okay. Alright, so that's basically it. Alright, so Red Bull Beach is here. But yeah, thank you guys for letting me notify that and then uh like me just double checking, cuz at least now we will have Red Bull Beach into the client, I really want Irem Square to come back. Alright, but everything should be good for the most part now, after I save this and now let me just drop this into the client, this is like me speeding like hella fast to do this. Hold on. Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm not crazy. So I'm rebooting into home now and then by the time it reboots, uh, everything should be fine. Hey, what's up, I was never able to get Target Manager to work, is this gonna, online will be for Kex, debug and Hen consoles? Oh yes, my PC is just really messy with files and this is like, I usually have to clean it every work session. Yeah, but I'm gonna try to get the cinema from eighty-nine to work and then yeah. And as well as official firmware. Alrighty, so. Let me uh just run the offline client. Hey, what's up Nano, yo, what's poppin? Hola. I've seen your video on the PlayStation two, it's crazy. And I know me and you talked before, um, I know you played PlayStation home, right now, um, it's just the development livestream. But yeah, hopefully Red Bull will work and we will get um, a whatchamacallit. Oh yo Nano, you should join um our um, whatchamacallit. I'm not too sure if you're in the actual Discord with us, but um, I'll be glad to have you here. Here, trying to get our Discord link here. For the online client, yeah, but for Hen via for the PlayStation home due to like LV two kernel issues, uh. You can't basically run like debug cells and elves and that's what was the issue, but hopefully I got everything correct. Um this first time and then I can uh. Set up the patch for you guys with this. Hold on, this should have been here. And I also need to find what I'll do today too. If you guys are interested, I will showcase um something pretty cool. I will show you like the official moderator jacket that was for on PlayStation Home. Hey, no problem, man. Just gotta wait for home to boot up, but let me go to uh this. Oh, see. My Spanish is kinda off though, a little bit, but I know like the basics. Alright, so um. Alright, so home is in right now. We're gonna just boot into Red Bull Beach cuz I'm not too sure what was the issue via with the. Should have been just the same. Ah, I think I know the issue. Um. I think I know what I did. I was like, why the scenes are not having like the metadata while booting up? But um here's Red Bull Beach, right? Yeah, this looks different. Okay, I can get some screen links working. But yeah, here's Red Bull Beach. I think I recall this space too, but. Alright, this got like two. I could do something with the screen links later on as well. Which I'll plan on probably doing. Alright, but let's go ahead and we're gonna get a nice picture to Red Bull Beach. Let me um. I don't know, my screen is kinda dark. Alright, we're gonna get like a nice image of this, so. Let me work on uh. Debug cam and then I'mma teleport myself off the map so we could get like a clean image of it. Since I have to uh. Trying to get like a really good image of Red Bull Beach to kinda symbolize it. That's actually not too bad. Maybe I want some like more foliage to it. Alright, that looks pretty good for like a test image and then I could resize it later. And then um. Alright, so this is gonna be like our dummy image, but um we're gonna fix that now. For real? Nice. Um, what I'll do in a second. I'll show you actually something cool, what I was trying to say. If you guys wanna see how like the old home moderator jacket was. Even though I'm trying to like do multiple things at once. Here was the PlayStation home moderator jacket for males. For some reason, I don't know why it's like so tight or. Actually, I'm trying to get like some good cargo shorts with this. I'll probably do that in the background, but in the meantime, I'm gonna open up Photoshop so I have my template. So I can make the SDC. I'm like doing, I got like one controller in my hand and I gotta. Alright, so you can see here, this is Red Bull. And um yeah, so this is gonna be like our dummy image right here. I'm just gonna go and save that via for. Alright, so Red Bull Beach should be fine. I have to uh what you might call it. I did one more thing that was by accident. I should have uh generated the core dot SDC stuff now. Uh because I didn't have that later, so that's why like my pictures are not showing up for the development scenes. So that's what I'm doing here really quick. And let me see. Mini game development was fine. It was the video one that had issues. Let me see. But I'm trying to find my cargo shorts, like I don't even know. There's so many clothing I have to uh go through. Which is in the 2.0 client if you guys haven't checked that out yet. Once I figure out like my shorts and pants, I'm gonna also make this like my official mod outfit and I'm gonna like load it in. Um is anybody saying something? Do you guys ever bring him back to Home Line Project? Yeah, that's what basically um what you might call it. Oh no, there is the woman's version of uh. The moderator jacket. It's basically the same one as that, it's just a little bit different. Where is the shorts that like doesn't look too bad with this? Okay, yeah. But yeah, in terms of like the online client, um that's what we're working on. The offline client is just something for people to like test out. I don't even know where my like, oh, there it go. Alright, so if I, well, I'm in like heaven right now. But if I go to here, let me see. So it's just those three, so with the test. Oh yeah, these are like, this, that's like my go-to shorts. Just wanna make sure I have everything correct. Alright, so now this should be the correct um patch. But what I'm gonna do really quickly is um. So I got the arcade stuff. I'm just trying to like create the patch so I make sure like everything is fine, but I gotta reload into home. Let me get this, alright, so. Alright, so the patch should be good for the most part. It has everything we need. And then uh I have to reboot back into home. Alright, so the patch should be okay. It's just. Oh, it's just recopying a lot of the same stuff. But um I'm gonna go to my harbor, I'm gonna create my moderator jacket or I'm gonna create my mod outfit right now, so. Yeah, that was it and that's how it looked. It was weird. Okay, and then uh let me load app, yeah, replace all items. Load Avatar and let me uh set this, I'm gonna just call it mod and then let me just uh. Alright, save Avatar. Alright, so it saved. Let me just load Avatar Adidas. Cuz I, and I'm just trying to test if my avatars are working on the fly, so and then load Avatar mod, okay. So yeah, the commands are working just fine. Let me get my hat cuz I like. But yeah, this was like the, one of the official moderator ones. I'm not too sure why it like was so tight on guys. But like official Sony moderators used to wear this back on home. But um. That's that. Does this work on Hen? Uh no, basically for the offline client, it's just for debug systems or like. Systems that are using rebug decks. The online client will work for Kex, Dex, debug systems, Hen and official firmware with like backups, which you can utilize. But um let's go ahead and we're gonna do one final test. I'm just gonna relaunch home really quickly and hopefully all of our images and all of our stuff will pop up. But um. Thank you guys for joining in, uh you know, the 32 people who like left the like, yeah. Yeah, that was a staff jacket for like actuals uh people who um. Like worked with PlayStation home or like people who actually moderated. But yeah, after this, I think I'm gonna call it quits. Alright, so home should be booting up right now. Thank you, thank you guys. No, thank you. For all your support and stuff, like you're the reason why I'm doing this. Like thank you guys for tuning in on a random like, what is today? Thursday? Yeah, thank you for joining on a Thursday, watching me, you know, this, I, you know, for me, it really means a lot to me. That's what I'm trying to say. But yeah, thank you guys just not only supporting the project, but you know, coming to my channel, um you know, leaving likes, you know. Being respectful to everybody or you know, to each other in the live streams. Um it really, you know, warms my heart just to see that uh you know, people still care about home, um you know. Care about me and my channel, so just thank you, like you guys really do not have to donate to me um anytime I livestream, like. I'm doing this for you guys, for you know, education and preservation purposes and just to have a good time, like I, I don't do this for no money. I do everything for free for home. But like, thank you, but now we gotta wait for home's infinite slow times. Just gonna make sure the debug log is here so I won't run into any errors. But uh hopefully the patch I created now should work just fine, um. I may have to mess around with the cinema auditorium, so that may maybe uh take me a little bit longer. And then um I can probably mess with that. But yeah, I may do some like general other fixes off camera, like uh fix the videos in Red Bull, probably put some posters up, um. Try to get this in the my auditorium to at least to boot. I can't guarantee on how to utilize the screen because. That build is so old or like that apartment, I should say. Or like the space itself is very old and I guess it's having issues. Uh but home is booting up now. Alrighty, so we can see here, um we got a Red Bull Beach image, so that's good. I could add it to my favorites. Let's just go ahead and do some QAing. And that's, I'm just gonna like QA through it really quickly. I'm just waiting for it to launch and then once it launches uh. When would this update come? Maybe later this week, um. Probably to be honest, uh this update with the. Red Bull stuff may could come out today. Like later, probably maybe Friday, but it would not take me long to compile this at all cuz that's what I'm doing now. I'm doing most of the work in y'all guys' face. Um but yeah, okay, so Red Bull Beach is working. Let's check out the SCE scene. Alright, so I'm not too sure why. Ah. The resource. Yeah, I'm really quick when it comes to updates, like I don't, I don't like wasting time. So the ball space um is having an issue. Deadsec was here, the arcade game is booting up. I don't know why it's having an issue via for that. I really want the, I think the ball is supposed to have like the Lewis script to it. Alright, so that's done. That's done. I don't know if the video screen will pop up, um. Alright, so the video screen is working. So I, it does have the test screen and the water, so it's just the ball that's giving me an issue, um. I'm not too sure why. What was the script? I need to figure out that though. But at least the scenes are booting into um. The correct space. I could read logs right now to see why it's bitching. Screens. I wanna see if like something in 89. Let me see something. Cuz I gotta like try to debug this hella quickly, alright. Oh, 001A? Nah, is that an A? No, it's not. What the hell? It just says Simon. Yeah, they're just like little basic mini games. Alright. Mini games. Environments. Uh but you know what? I don't think people will care about the ball. Um, I could figure out later, but um. I think um I'm about to end the livestream here. Um I think I got to a pretty good standpoint. I got, let me see, 1, 2, 3, 4. Hold on, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yeah, I got 6 spaces and another one I have to test later on. But um I basically got 6 spaces done. I did do a lot um for today in like these 3 hours. I got like a video to pop up, but yeah, I think I'm going to end the livestream here. The livestream will be up later, probably, I don't know. Depending on how YouTube renders it, it will be um basically for um you know, back on my channel. So if you guys missed any parts of this livestream and you wanna go over it, you can, but um yeah, I think I am gonna go eat some lunch. I will be probably livestreaming later on this weekend depending on how I feel, but um. Yeah, my name is Nagato. Thank you once again. Thank you for all the love. Thank you for the donations and I'll see you guys. In the next video, so please, everybody be safe, you know, and everybody be straight. Thank you guys for watching.